Lord, we love to thank you for your goodness. Start out in your word this morning where it reminds us that your mercies are new every morning and great is your faithfulness. I thank you for your ever presence in our life. Thank you for this present, your presence in this room right now as we take care of the business of our city. As for your blessings, we thank you for every blessing that we enjoy, the freedoms that we enjoy tonight. We just thank you for this time, in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Don't want to talk too loud here, everyone here. Consider the, can y'all hear me back there? Okay. Consider the first item and consider a resolution approving an advanced funding agreement with TechDOT, an engineering services contract, an expenditure of up to $57,500 in the TURIS number two funds for a streetscape enhancement project with the TURIS number two.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members. As you have in your packet described, we have been working on a downtown streetscape project for the last several months with the Downtown Redevelopment Committee, which was an outgrowth of envisioned mineral wells. One of the things that we did as we looked at this project was to approach TechDOT to see if we can get some funding assistance and we found out that this project would be eligible for TechDOT enhancement program funding. The financial participation in these enhancement programs essentially is, is that if TechDOT approves the project, then the city's responsibility is to do the engineering required to bid the project out and have the project. Essentially what we have done is that we have indicated to TechDOT that we would like to go forward with this project. They have prepared, which you have a copy of in your packet, the advanced funding agreement. The total project cost for the downtown streetscape project that is proposed is right at $681,000. Again, our share of that would be to provide the, the funding to support the engineering required, which would be $57,500. If you were to look in the advanced funding agreement toward the latter portion of the document in attachment C, you'll see the project budget, which does detail out those costs. We are recommending that tax increment reinvestment zone number two funds be utilized to provide the necessary dollars to secure the engineering services required in the amount of $57,500. That being the case, the tax increment reinvestment zone number two board of directors met early this afternoon at four o'clock and they considered a resolution to recommend the expenditure of $57,500 to put toward this street enhancement project. You have a copy of the resolution that was approved before you on the table this afternoon. Given that, we would request at this time that the council consider approval of a resolution, which you'll find on the page immediately following the commentary that you have in your packet, a resolution that would authorize the execution of the advanced funding agreement with TechDOT, as well as authorizing the execution of the agreement for engineering services for the streetscape project with Triple Rollins and Associates. Again, expending $57,500 in tax increment reinvestment zone funds. So we would bring that recommendation to you at this time to approve the resolution that you had before you.
Motion from the council?
I make a motion to approve the resolution of $57,000 for engineering.
On the paper? Motion passed. Are any opposed? Any objections? Motion passes. Sixty.
It's all on me.
All right. Second item of business, considering this guest in Vision Mineral Wells. A little information about this, I was hoping to have a more relaxed atmosphere. It's one reason we have the table set up as it is, so that y'all can speak freely and openly. I'm really trying to gather information as, as people look to us as a council for how we're going to lead and help lead on Envision Mineral Wells. I know the chamber is taking that main role, but I really want y'all to explain to me if you can, like I'm brand new to mineral wells, and what our plan is with Envision Mineral, with Envision Mineral Wells, and then hopefully next week we can get some further direction from the chamber to better flesh it out. I will also say I got to speak with Wes Jury, who's been federal officer in creating this, and he gave me a few questions that can help, help all of us in, I guess, a better understanding of the plan that we have in place. So, I don't know how many of y'all members are familiar with Envision, I guess by show of hands, is everyone pretty familiar with it on the council? Excellent. How many members, and these are questions I got help from with Wes, how many members understand and are aware of the strategies and tactics that were used to implement and start Envision Mineral Wells?
Fairly.
Can y'all explain to me as a brand new person in mineral wells, because if I didn't know anything for pursuit of the direction while we're going with Envision Mineral Wells, which I'm a huge supporter of, I'm just trying to get information so that I can be a mouthpiece, a PR person for this plan that's in place.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I attended, I think, every steering committee since it started in 2015, and it's my understanding that it began as a city initiated a community-wide strategic plan, and it was divided into seven, I don't know, five or so areas of focus, everything from education to economic development. And Lance can correct me if I'm incorrect, but I believe each council person was assigned the task of bringing people from their constituency to the table and asking them to participate. And of course, anyone, it wasn't exclusively for those folks, but folks were engaged by the city. I think there were as many, over a hundred at some of the meetings.
About a hundred, about 135 letters were, were sent out to various groups, individuals in the community enlisting their participation.
And folks could pick an area of their interest, which for me personally, I picked education workforce development, and we really spent time over two or three meetings hatching out the things that we'd like to see big picture wise from Envision. And in my opinion, folks were very bold in what they said and very honest, and therefore we have the bullet points and action items we see before you, for us, and as well as things actually, things actually happening. So, but I've been there from the beginning and I'm very, I, the biggest, for those of you who are out there, the biggest risk to me to Envision Mineral Wells is that it, it sort of loses steam. So I think it's really important that if you're not on one of those committees in an area of your interest to jump in and get engaged, because, you know, a plan is great. I mean, if, if 25% of what was in this plan happened, Mineral Wells would be a totally different place. And so it's up to all of us now to get engaged and continue, and I think, see lots of folks out here who have not been to an Envision Mineral Wells meeting. So, that's my perspective, and I think the council needs to continue to be the champions of implementation of Envision Mineral Wells.
Yeah, I kind of came to it a little bit late. I got one of the initial letters when they went out, I guess 135, but at that time I was working in downtown, but working commuting every day so I could make the meetings. So, I got involved probably a little over a year ago. And what I really like about it is that it's a collaboration between a lot of different parts in the city. It's a collaboration between the city, the chamber, the ISD, the hospital. And I mean, it's just a lot of individuals that have come together to give ideas to try to better the city. And before this, to my recollection, I don't remember a plan that really got everybody involved. And, you know, right now, I mean, it, it's taken a year or so to kind of get it together and now it's really starting to move. You know, in my opinion, I, I think it also has inspired Randy Nix to do what he's doing. I, I mean, I'd have to ask Randy about that, but I, I know he looks at Envision Mineral Wells plans quite a bit, and, you know, I mean, I just, I think it's a, you know, pretty good start for what we want to do.
I too didn't come along to Envision Mineral Wells until somewhat over a year ago. What intrigued me about it is the fact that it is citywide encompassing. It is not just the city of Mineral Wells, it's the school district, the hospital district, the medical community. It is a extremely far-reaching community development organization. What, what is so neat about it is it's the only time in my lifetime as a resident of Mineral Wells that I've seen something of this magnitude get started, but then continue the steam to stay connected and do more than just put some things on paper. It's been in place long enough now that things are actually beginning to come to fruition that were birthed out of the top of over two years ago. And that excites me tremendously. As a council member, you know, it, it's a big broad thing, so as a council member of mine, the place I've rarely tried to pay attention or the things that are ultimately going to fall to the responsibility of the city government of the city of Mineral Wells, which is the infrastructure, the quality of life issues, and things like that. We have excellent, excellent representation in the healthcare, the education, some of the economic development things. So, I'm not as versed in some of those special councils as maybe I am the ones that are eventually going to come to the city and say, you know, this is kind of what we think should be happening, you know, help us here. I'm trying to stay focused in the things that are eventually going to come before this council to assist.
I did not attend the meetings in the beginning and I, I did that more or less intentionally. I wanted it to be a community effort and not something that the council seemed as though we were leading and directing. So, I've been involved in it over a year, and I was part of team Mineral Wells that went to Austin to represent our community. And we had such a diverse group of folks from our community, it just felt good. And everybody was like-minded, and I can tell you that after the first meeting that I went to, it just felt like people's opinions were beginning to change, because instead of sitting in a room and talking about what we were not, we were talking about what we could be. And there's been a lot of attitude change from it, and I'm a firm believer in it. As Beth stated, my biggest concern is with any program, it starts off with a bang and then it dies. And so that was one of my main things, is I want to keep that going and let the people have their voice and be a part of it. So I think it's one of the best things that's happened during the line.
I can agree with all the positive things everyone has said so far about it, and then also add, one of the fun things for me being a part of is when we see, at least the arm I'm involved in, community redevelopment and the downtown redevelopment, we have specific action items, and then those are met, and then it's what are our new action items? And things are, they're tangible and are happening, and there's, you know, measured progress.
And I'd just like to state that it all, it all works together. Even though Envision Mineral Wells was started in 2015, we've seen here tonight, I mean, objective number one for community redevelopment was downtown. And we have a downtown project that was brought in, and it's my understanding also that it was funded by, the city and the chamber funded that plan years ago. It's that normative, the downtown landscaping, and we were, through Envision Mineral Wells, able to bring it back to life and fund it with a TIF that I believe was established under the leadership of Mayor Holloman. Is that correct, through his legislative efforts? So, you know, the work that folks have put in over the years is, we finally, I think, have an outlet for bringing all of our efforts under one plan. And things are, things are happening, and I don't think people would keep coming back to their meetings if they weren't having it.
I would say I was not involved initially. I, I'm so grateful that so many groups from so many different areas of the city are working together to take, make the city forward. And I would commend David May. I, I believe he has been instrumental in his reporting of what's happening with Envision Mineral Wells and kept me informed in the early days, and since I've been involved with the council last year and a half, been trying to be more involved in what's happening with Envision Mineral Wells. I just had a long conversation with John Kim just the other day, talking about what is being developed for the high schools, trades area, with the oil field and welding for the oil field being such a promising career for young people here in this city, and how that they are training for that. They are very accomplished in that at their graduation, ready to go to work and have a career, and then tying that to Weatherford College and getting our young people started in the right direction. And so much of what I've heard over the years is we need better jobs, jobs for our young people to step into, and we're seeing that happen presently. And so all of that, I think, is an outgrowth for Envision Mineral Wells.
Fantastic. I, I'm just wanting to add coal to the steam engine we have so we can continue on and speed up on things if possible. How many members here understand the structure that's been developed at the chamber to support implementation of the plan and who the leadership is?
Talking about the different councils that they've established.
Correct.
I'm familiar with.
So where, how does our council fall in to support them in the implementation of Are we better suited to get out of the way and let the chamber take lead? Or are we better suited to try and encourage or look at budgetary items that we can help with? What do y'all see our role as council if the lead people are this, is the chamber, which has been already decided for the implementation?
I think that the council needs to participate in, first of all, participate in an area of interest to us individually in Envision, because if we're not willing to participate in this process that, my understanding, Mayor Allen and city manager Howerton brainstorm together, we're not, if we're, we can't just dump it in the chamber's lap. We have to participate actively and encourage our constituents to participate actively, because, you know, if we're not on the front lines and giving our suggestions, then, you know, then again, I think that is a real danger in killing the program.
Yeah, I, I think the whole program of Envision, it, it gives citizens a voice, and any citizen can be part of Envision if they choose to, to be a part of it and go to the meetings and go to these subcommittee meetings. And I think that's really where a lot of ideas to better this community come from is from these groups of citizens working on different areas that could better the community. And, you know, I, I'm part of it, and I know several other council members are part of it. So I'm part of it as a citizen too, also putting my ideas out there, or, you know, listening to other ideas or whatever. But I think the beginnings of that, that ends up eventually, you know, stuff like that makes it to the council to where then, you know, we can approve funding or whatever to make these ideas actually happen. So, you know, I mean, citizens say they want a voice and what goes on, and I think that's where it starts, is in Envision and in these groups and get involved and be part of it.
It's a simple application process through the chamber where you would indicate your area of interest and they would consider your application, I believe, at the next board meeting. So, it's a simple one-page form, two-page form maybe, so it's not, there is a process for being involved, and I think you can jump right in after that.
I think Envision almost acts as a liaison between the citizens of Mineral Wells and government, governing body, to present ideas, they're already, they're already having implementation, very specific funding aspect there. Either, as a council, it's our job to look over the recommendations and, and see if we see that.
Where, where as a council can we encourage folks or citizens to be to get involved in the implementation? What's being implemented right now that we can encourage people to get involved with, whether it's ourselves personally, as many of those are already involved with it? What areas are being implemented right now that we can directly affect by calling out to the citizens saying, hey, this is what's being currently focused on right now, where can we help support?
I think there are several, you know, there may be areas that have a little more steam behind them right now than other areas. I think the first question might be, where is there a lack? You know, what, what gap can I fill in? And look at those, and if that individual is suited for, for any of those areas, because, you know, as time goes on, people move, they change positions where they might not be able to attend meetings, and so if anybody can, you know, step in and fill in where there's been a void on a committee or a council, you know, I might say check there first to pick up the slack if we've dropped it anywhere. But then, I don't know, there's so much going on. Maybe y'all know anything in particular that needs?
Well, I think the chamber has done a good job of trying to advertise meetings, and they always state it's open to the public. You know, anytime I meet someone that has a question about it, I always try to invite them to, to come be a part of it. It's not like you lost out from not being in the beginning. I think one meeting and you see what's going on and, and the plans, then you're in. It's not like you were too late to get on board. But I think mainly advertising for folks other than word of mouth is going to the chamber.
I think that, I think that the presence of an outside facilitator, who, who at this time is Wes Jury, or, you know, Wes does not wish to engage, continue engaging in it forever, I think the presence of an outside facilitator is really important in a strategic planning process, because we hire them to tell us what we need to be doing. So they are independent of any community influences or anything of that. And I would like to see, I mean, I'd like to see the city continue to financially support that planning process, I think, and I believe we agreed to do that for the coming year. And one thing that too, I think, is really important to notice, you talk about what's going on right now. It's, it's really hard almost to answer that question, because, you know, we just approved plans for something that was planned 15 years ago, and, you know, this is definitely being a part of the long game. So even if they're going to do something like plan a tourism event, that could probably take a year. So, you know, be, be willing to, you know, you may not see fireworks at your first meeting, so don't be discouraged, but, you know, good things take time. So I would definitely encourage anybody interested in it to consider the long game.
For sure. So are we still in the planning process?
I don't know if the planning process ends, I don't, I wouldn't think. I think it's ongoing plans, you know, any kind of group or anything like that, it's continuously ongoing, you know, stop it, you know, there's, there's no stopping.
I think we're considered in the implementation phase, but of course, things change. So, yeah, I don't think that the plan would ever stop. Let's hope that anything never stops.
Yeah, I agree that, you know, as objectives are met, you start on whatever the next objective is, but you're always planning what then is coming down the pipe next. Kind of back to your question of what can we do or what can the citizens do or what is happening now, there's a lot of things that have been, I believe, part of the outgrowth of Envision. I think there's, there's a, a culture change happening right before our eyes. I think, I believe that Mineral Wells is great again, or keep Mineral Wells great again. The community cleanup is a little bit of an outgrowth of the idea of Envision Mineral Wells. What can I do personally? I can do a little more than just watch after my own yard. I can do a little bit in my neighborhood. What can another citizen do? They can take a little pride in their own neighborhood. They can start changing the view of this community better. That is an awesome place that they could start, right at their front door.
One other question to this is also from Wes. How many members know the current status in terms of implementation of the plan?
Being, so we got updated that from every council, I believe, so.
So when y'all got updated, or does that even, does it tell us anything we can do to help, whether it's budgetary items, or do we have a budget workshop coming up and the things that we need to be considering in regards to finances for helping support it?
Nothing specific was asked for at that time. The individual committees got up and told us what they're working on, but no one has come in with, we want to do this exact thing and we need $10,000. That's what you're looking for.
I guess then my other question would be, would y'all see it beneficial for maybe next week if, if the director of the chamber, Mr. Roach, can come in and kind of brief us where they're at with each of the, the sections as far as implementation, so that we can prepare when we go into our budget sessions to say, hey, do we need to allocate more money towards this or that to help them out? Would that be beneficial for them to tell us exactly where we're at in the implementation? Because if we're just still on the planning side and on cities, there's not really much budgetary item for me to deal with. But if we're getting to the point where we're implementing a lot of this, then I think that's where we can really help facilitate a lot of additional help.
There was a report, I mean, there, I saw, I saw Ryan somewhere share, there, there was a report in, at that meeting, right? Like there's a document or PowerPoint or something that says where we, where we are. I assume that's posted somewhere online, we're supposed to check it out.
Yeah, that'd be good for us to get, so we can all be on the same page as to how we can help get behind y'all and put more coal in the engine to steam it forward. So that's the big reason, I just want to sit down and chat in here for y'all, which y'all use for on Envision. I know I'm a big fan, I'm supportive of it, I just want to make sure that we have a, more of a fleshed out plan from what I can see. Because I see a lot of good plans, but they're, they're fairly broad. I think, when y'all mentioned a broad plan, I was wanting to get down to some of the more actionable items, I think you've spoken about this already, in regards to how can we have these actual items reached at the committees and how can we support them, even if it's just supportive from the mayor coming out saying, hey, I'm looking for five citizens that have expertise in this area, would y'all lend a hand and help out? I think that goes a long way in letting our community even more involved, because I know for me personally, the, the invite to come to a meeting doesn't really, I want to get my hands dirty and get, get to work. And I think there's other people that are similar to that. So if we can get a call to action from action points, I don't know if you would be okay with that, Mr. Roach, maybe next week, in giving a... with that, Mr. Roach, maybe next week, in giving a briefing on the six areas and saying, hey, here's some, here's what we're working on, here's some actual items that we're pursuing. I know that would be really helpful for us on the timetable, dealing with the budget, as well as getting behind y'all and supporting y'all.
No problem.
Excuse me, Mayor, would you want this on the next council?
Yes, ma'am. My hope was that this would be a very informal, but still, maybe it's just me being out of place, but that's okay. That's really the only question I had. Does anyone here have any questions about Envision?
I'll ask one. Okay. I'm like probably three or four of y'all about being new to the Envision Mineral Wells and not catching up with it. I've been to a few meetings. Two or three of you spoke about specific, or you spoke about things that are, that have come to fruition or are coming to fruition. Can we get specific on what things those are?
I can give some. I'm head of the Workforce Education Development Council, and we've done a lot of things. We've already got two programs ready for next year at the high school level that weren't there before. It's an agreement between Weatherford College and the high school, and they are going to start with a CNA program. It wasn't there before, so that'll be starting in, and it's going to be another jump from there with the Carrollton to keep going. That's one. The other one was with a couple of businesses that we have right now that are willing to help our students. They're going to be paying money to help students drive back and forth or ride a bus, the county transit if they don't have cars in order to work. We've done a full swat on the education system, figuring out what the weaknesses are, what the strengths are and so forth, and we've put all that together. We also have, along with that, we've already worked with the Workforce Commission. We have them coming already, and they're going to be talking to businesses about a bunch of grants that are available. We had about five manufacturing companies meet with us, and their big thing was, they wanted people to be trained in safety, OSHA, things like that. It's a training that they send their folks to for, it's six days to go take all these training, logistics is one, and we're in the process of getting that brought here. And that is all caused with a bunch of people that have had to come together, and we've had to work for about six months getting that all coordinated, because it's a lot of coordination with a lot of businesses. And so, that's just to name a few of the things we've done over the last year. We still have some in the pipe, you may not want to hear about those, because they haven't been completed yet, but a lot of different things for the workforce education. I've invited everybody, I put it on Facebook, if y'all want to come to our meetings, you know, just come on. We are, we don't need money, we just, we are, we are a partnership. We are working with people, trying to build those relationships. And so that's what we've been working on. We met with Weatherford College this last week and had a wonderful meeting about some other things that they may bring to Mineral Wells. And we're just waiting for the businesses to give us a couple of...
Thank you, Ms. Roach.
That's what we've done.
I'm Ted from the Governmental Affairs Committee. That name sounds terrible, but that's, you know. We've been doing lunch and learns. Every two months, we've invited the public, especially anyone in the Envision Mineral Wells group. We started with city government, so we've been through all of the different offices within the city. We've had them ask questions about code enforcement, and we've had finance, we've had fire police. As a matter of fact, next Tuesday will be our last lunch and learn for city, and we have public works coming. Martin Bussey is going to come and speak to us about the drone and the way they use that inside the city government. We also have our second trip planned to go back to the Capitol and make for sure that those folks know who Mineral Wells is, and to get our name out there before those budget processes start. So that's what the group I'm in has done so far. We will be going from city, now we'll start organizing county, so we'll be inviting county government officials to come and tell us what they do.
For all the directors over each of the sections of Envision, we're here to teach us more, and so that people realize all the work that y'all are putting into it, and be a sounding board and help in any way we can. There's, I think, a lot of times, the citizens, whether it's Mr. Shipman over here, not exactly sure, or like myself, not sure what implementation's going on, if there's a way to get that information out. And I'm sure, Mr. Roach, I'm sure it's on the website, The Chamber, but we can just be another venue to broadcast that, so people know, even if there's a monthly update, we're there as a council, because Envision is so integral to our city, it seems wise to go ahead and say, hey, here's what was accomplished this month, here's where we're moving forward, here's all the work that the citizens have been putting in, so that we can pat their backs for all the hard work and labor they're putting in. So I appreciate y'all sharing, assuming y'all's information.
Well, there's a point under infrastructure and mobility that I'd like to indulge in my mind and highlight, and that was goal number three. You asked about things that are actually happening right now, and that was to develop the airport. And we have a relatively new airport manager who was hired, probably partly because of his marketing background, and he is going all over the country promoting the Mineral Wells Airport as a place for charter landings and folks to obviously do airport things. I hate to say that, but that's my technical definition. But, and he did have an aviation background, so I think that's a great way that we can demonstrate that, because of this document and this planning process we've undertaken, that can potentially drive maybe like a staff hire. We need to promote the airport, as well as, I don't know if y'all attended the airport celebration, that was a fantastic event that really highlighted our airport. So that's, again, goal number three on infrastructure and mobility. It seems like we are well underway, and a lot of that is really staffing here, I think.
Yeah, let me reiterate, too, what we just voted on a little bit ago, to make sure citizens know, but we just approved $57,000 to go toward engineering fees for a streetscape that should get started probably, what, January of 2019? And that is, that comes directly out of Envision. I mean, it's plans that the city has had for a long time that were drawn up years ago, but because of Envision, that has been brought back to light, you know, modified and all that kind of stuff. And so, I mean, here, within the next six, seven months, you're going to start seeing construction downtown and beautification of the downtown area through landscaping and streetscaping.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that, Councilman Ray. I was looking at the numbers, and I don't know if y'all picked up on when Lance was talking, but $681,000 that Texas thought is squaring away for us. So we're getting, I mean, we're only spending $50,000, that's a...
That's awesome.
Good deal.
Do they have any more money?
Yeah, exactly.
I told Lance to make sure that they had some more money and that we got as much as we could.
We'll go back.
Excellent.
Well, that being said, I mean, any grant the city gets, I mean, there's almost always going to be some kind of cost. So, I mean, it's good to get that, but, you know, it does cost somewhere along the way. So nothing's ever completely free usually, so, but it's, yeah, it's great to get that, for sure.
So that's not the only time we can go back to this date for that?
No, no. No, they do this periodically.
I appreciate y'all's time. Y'all have any other questions? Any other questions, Colonel?
I have a question.
Anything on parks?
Anything on parks in regards to Envision? Who's the director over the park section with the executive meeting that is that?
Well, what the community redevelopment would be parks, right? I'm not sure.
Brian's here.
Yeah.
Well, it kind of falls under mine, and we have done an inventory of all the amenities in the city and all, and we've reviewed that, but we haven't come up with any recommendations of expanding those up this way.
Are y'all soliciting recommendations then, from the people, or?
Well, yes, I mean, we can, here, again, that kind of falls back onto the city itself, because we're not going to actually go out and build a park.
Right.
That is more of a city's thing. So we were just taking an inventory of all the amenities, so that we could see what was out there, and then hopefully bring some recommendations to the council at some time.
The Citizens Bond Committee did have some parks-related items in kind of the second tier of the recommendations. I think it was about $2 million for West City Park, and a couple hundred thousand for the Southeast Park. So that is on, I guess that's, we could say, on the radar, and it's just a matter of, how much do we want to pay for?
And there's been discussion, too. I mean, I think it's premature to talk about it, but, I mean, you were at a meeting the other day where green space was discussed, new green space, anyway, you know, potentially could happen, so.
Boardwoman?
Yeah.
Let me add a little bit on the parks and rec side, too. I mean, there is a little bit of activity, again, with tourism, and especially how it might relate to the tourism side, the parks and recreation. There are a couple of projects that that group is looking at, but primarily, that group was focused to enhance the relationship with the Mineral Wells State Park in developing a MOU that maybe we could partner with, and somehow enhance the activities and the programs through the Black Mineral Wells State Park. But what has progressed through that is maybe some local projects that would benefit both the local citizens as well as tourists, and a couple of those being, some of the very preliminary looking at are, you know, a disc golf park, as well as a couple of mountain biking, off-road biking trails. And so what we're looking to do is reach out to a couple of experts who can assist in this project, and so that's kind of where we are, at least in that phase, is getting some outside experts to help us, making sure that we're identifying property that is supportive of it, as well as working with the landowner, if it's private property, to get that permission. There's obviously going to be some legal aspects to it, and so, you know, it's going to be a process. We've initially talked to Texas Frontier Trails Park, and they have preliminarily agreed to being one of those places that we could put an off-road biking trail to enhance that property. We've identified some property, but the rest of the property that we've identified is currently privately owned, so we have to get permission and talk to those landowners. So in terms of parks and rec projects, those are just a few that have been discussed and considered this time.
Would you go back to the MOU for the state park and just briefly expand on that and why it's valuable, that we're a part of the process of that for our state park here?
I mean, obviously, the park already has such a great following and is used, it's one of the top visited state parks in the entire city.
Or what is the MOU?
But an MOU, I mean, leading up, getting to that, the MOU allows a city or an organization to go out and, whether it be recruit, if you will, what they call concession ears, for-profit businesses that could use the state park property. So for instance, you have the rock climbing area of the state park. If you look around, one of, and you talk to the state park officials, a lot of people come to the state park, but they don't have the equipment to participate in the rock climbing. So you could potentially go out, recruit some type of private business to come in either to Mineral Wells or at the state park and be able to, either you hire them, you know, they come in and do the belane for you, or you lease out the equipment for the day, and so they could take advantage of what that has to do. But you have to enter into a MOU with the state park and able to go out and work through that process, and so that's just one example.
Thank you. I get a lot of questions, oh, why don't we have a place to rent bikes, or why don't we, you know, but that's a good example of how the vision process works on the governmental side, for us to be able to reach towards some of that.
And Ryan, wasn't that one of the things we learned on our trip to Austin, we were encouraged to do that with the Parks Department?
Absolutely. When we went to Austin, we met with state agencies, and we met with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Division, and that was one of the top priorities that they recommended for us coming back and taking a look at. In that process, along with that, they suggested looking at, and doing an important, and that's a lot of where we have been right now, through Envision Mineral Wells, is kind of taking an assessment of where we are. And so we have, one, looking at, they did an economic impact and study at the state park, and so we have a copy of that. We also, Lake, or not Lake, but Palapinta Mountain State Park, what is it that we can do as neighbors and as county friends to help support that project at the state level? And there's recently been some land acquired for wildlife management area in around Lake Palapinta. So what is that going to look like? And, you know, how can we take advantage and use that as an asset to promote activity in our community? Those are all, y'all keep saying, Councilwoman, it was, those derived from going to Austin.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all's time again, and if you want to mention...
I have one thing to ask, if you don't mind.
Sure, yeah, please.
Well, has there been a second phase to Envision Mineral Wells, Phase One, that Wes Jury was involved in? Because I spoke to Wes as well, and we paid him, does anybody know the number that we paid him, the amount? Not exactly?
Not exactly, y'all talk about...
Would $50,000 be a range?
No, that'd be a little high.
Maybe 40?
Yeah, thirty to forty.
Okay, so 30 to 40 was what we paid him for, is it for Phase One, correct?
That's my regulation.
Okay, so Phase One was 30 to 40. Did anybody come back, did Wes Jury come back?
Yes.
He did. And did we pay him when he came back?
Nope. I sat with him for a day, the other day, along with some of the other council people, and it's all part of the same thing we did with. He came back and met with us, we told him where we were, he gave us ideas where we could go, looked at what we presented, gave us just all kinds of ideas.
Well, I'm not opposed to Envision Mineral Wells, I think it's a great start. But when I looked through the packet myself a year ago, when I got involved, you know, like a lot of the council folks here, I was unaware. But I did my research, I went and talked to Ryan Roach, I came and I talked to Lance Howerton, and I called Wes Jury. But my question was, when I talked to Wes, he said, y'all have only done Phase One. And then I began talking about a comprehensive plan, which our mayor has mentioned as well. And when I mentioned that to Wes, he said, yeah, there's got to be another phase where you have actionable steps. And, Ms. Bradford, I mean, hey, that's great that you have stuff going on at the school.
Come to my meeting, I promise you, you can get all the actionable steps you want to see, and we could use some extra help, I promise.
Well, I don't, I don't have a problem getting involved, but my question is this, what?
Brandon, next week, we're actually going to have them present the actionable items.
Okay, so there is a, that was my question, is the actionable side of it, because...
Brandon, in April, the city council approved a contract with the chamber to keep Wes Jury on board for the next 12 months, so as a part of this next phase, we have contracted, presume Brian, that y'all have that agreement in place.
Yes.
So both, both the city and the chamber are participating to keep Wes Jury in this process for the next 12 months at minimum.
Okay, and then, was that a cost to the city or just to the chamber, or a joint effort?
Both of them.
Okay.
I would say that's for Phase Two, because that's an implementation phase, so, and I like very much the idea of that outside person to come kick us in the pants if we're not making enough progress.
Yeah, Wes is a fantastic idea, and you're going to thank him, so he's really helpful.
Well, just for the record, I mean, for people that are watching on Facebook and who aren't coming to the meetings, you know, that's an easy one to miss. Are we out about the same amount of money on that as well, or?
No, it's some, last, it's $24,000 for the next 12.
Okay.
$2,000.
Thank you.
Thanks for your question, Brandon. So no more questions, so move on to the last item on the agenda, and I read this verbatim. So the Mineral Wells City Council will begin its executive session on this 29th day of May 2018 at 5:00 PM. The subject matter of this executive session deliberation is as follows. City council will recess into executive session, close meeting in accordance with Texas Government Code Chapter 551.071, on a matter on which the duty of the city attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas regarding confidential communication clearly conflicts with the Texas Open's Meeting Act, and in accordance with Chapter 551.087 on deliberations regarding economic development incentives to a business regarding the Mineral Wells Industrial Foundation. economic development incentives to a business regarding the Mineral Wells Industrial Foundation.
Thank you for the cookies, Alan. Thank you for the cookies.
Is it recording live?
Yes.
You need to move it away from the door.
Oh, I'll turn it off.
It's a little bag they made for Washington, and it's about that big, and if I, or the back of the cab inside the front, it just fits in.
It's 7:32. We've been, the city council meeting started at 5:00, and Steve Butcher just walked out to get his packet, his binder to speak to the city council. So this has been a marathon for these guys. The mayor's only, this is his first real meeting, and it's already been about an hour and 45 minutes in a special session with the Industrial Foundation. So he is shaking things up. We started a meeting at 5:00 this evening. Richard Ball and Steve Butcher just left the executive session meeting, so hopefully we'll all get to go home soon.
No actionable statement. All right, the Mineral Wells City Council's completed its executive session on this 29th of May 2018 at 8:30 PM.